This evening, council is grateful to have Dr. Kweisi Gayima, Lead Pastor of All Nations Seventh-day Adventist Church, here to pray with us. Pastor, welcome to council.
Thank you for having me. Let us pray. Eternally God, we are grateful for the gift of life and grateful for the privilege to serve. We ask for wisdom. We ask for direction. And above all, we ask that you would take care of our personal businesses as we put forth the business of others. May this be done. And at the end of the day, give us the full cause to glorify your name for what you have allowed us to achieve. For we have prayed in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor. Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance Faber, Remy, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance Faber, Remy, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal is approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the bulletin. Are there any other communications that will come up before council?
Not at this time.
Are there any resolutions or announcements from colleagues, starting with Councilmember Bankston?
Thank you, President Harden. Just one announcement this evening. As a reminder that tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. here in council chambers, my office will hold a public hearing to consider amendments to the contracts establishing and governing the Madison Township Joint Economic Development District and the Northern Pickaway County Joint Economic Development District. This public hearing will give interested parties the opportunity to comment and provide recommendations on the amendment. Those interested in reading the amendment prior to the hearing may reach out to the city clerk's office to acquire a copy. Any resident seeking to submit written testimony to or provide in-person testimony should contact my office by 12:00 p.m. on the day of the hearing by emailing my legislative aide, JP Dorval, at JB, as in boy, dorval, D-O-R-V-A-L, at columbus.gov. Each speaker's remarks will be limited to three minutes or less. And just one last thing I just wanted to say, Council President, as we close out Black History Month, just to remind folks that Black History is American history and that it's something that is to be celebrated every single day. This past weekend had the honor to go to the Keys of Black Wealth and the Equity Collective, as well as the opening of the Adelphi Bank. So there's a lot of great momentum happening here in the city of Columbus for our Black community. But we have to make sure that we continue that momentum every single day and that equity doesn't just happen in one month, but it happens every single day here in the city of Columbus. So thank you to everyone here and also happy Black History Month for the last, for the next two days, right? Next 24 hours. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Burrosa de Padilla.
Nothing for me this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Council President. This evening, I have one very important announcement today. Hiring qualified staff is critical to effectively operating our city's recreation centers and pools this summer. To that end, I would like to announce that the Recreation and Parks Department will be hosting their annual seasonal hiring fair on March 11th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Franklin Park Adventure Center, 1755 East Broad Street. Starting pay for lifeguards is $17 an hour, with the potential to earn an incentive of $500 at the season's end. Anyone 15 and eligible certainly can apply. Anyone unable to attend the job fair may contact the Aquatic Center for more information at aquaticcenter@columbus.gov. For more information on seasonal rec and park aid positions, please reach out to Rob Reiser at 614-645-2348. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. And thank you for lifting that. It's really important this year that we have all of our young folks in the pools. And the way that we do that is making sure that we have lifeguard. So if you know someone that's looking, please...
Councilman Remy mentioned it to me that he was interested in being a lifeguard, so...
I like it. I like it.
Exactly.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Dorance, our president-elect. Councilmember Faber.
Thank you, Council President Harden. As, excuse me, my colleague, Councilmember Nick Bankston, just said, this is the last council meeting in February, meaning the last Black History Month highlight for this year. But it doesn't stop after the month of February. So as a reminder, this year's Black History Month theme is Black Resistance: Building Bridges and Navigating Barriers. The theme explores how Black Americans have resisted historic and ongoing oppression. While this is the last Black History Month highlight for this year, I strongly encourage everyone to continue to seek out, read, watch documentaries, or research the impact of Black Americans in history, as Black history is absolutely American history. So today, I would like to highlight Catherine Johnson, who perfectly embodies Black resistance. Catherine Johnson was the first Black woman to integrate West Virginia's graduate schools, eventually earning a PhD in mathematics. Upon achieving such a distinction, Catherine pursued an opportunity to work for the National Advisory Committee for Aeronautics. In her role, she analyzed data from flight tests and helped investigate a plane crash caused by turbulence. As an NACA transitioned into a new agency, NASA, she started performing flight trajectory analysis for the Mission Freedom VII, the United States' first-time launching humans into space. She continued to excel in her role, becoming the first woman in the Flight Research Division of NASA to receive credit as an author of a research report and later played a key role in John Glenn's orbital mission. She achieved this storied career in the face of many obstacles, both because she was a woman and because she was Black. In recognition of her astounding contributions in America, in 2015, President Obama awarded her the Presidential Medal of Freedom, this nation's highest civilian honor. It's with that, I officially close out this year's highlights of Black History Month. Also, once again encouraging you all to continue to seek out more information about Black Americans and their contribution to the greater society. Thank you, Council President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I just want to mention that we have a final scheduled mobile food vending public hearing on Wednesday, March 8th at 4:00 p.m. Written and request for speaking will go to Lucy Frank, my legislative aide, LJfrank@columbus.gov. That's LJfrank@columbus.gov. Again, that's going to be Wednesday, March 8th at 4:00 o'clock, right here in chambers. Thanks so much, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there any comments by our auditor, City Attorney's Office? Seeing none, are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from tonight's agenda, consent agenda? Seeing none, one may now have a motion to waive reading of titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk. Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance Faber, Remy, President Harden.
Thank you. Well, the clerk now reading to the records ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda.
Economic Development Committee, ordinances 390 and 470-2023. Technology Committee, ordinances 0388 and 0457-2023. Public Service and Transportation Committee, Resolution 32X, ordinances 464, 482, 499-2023. Education Committee, ordinance 383-2023. Public Utilities Committee, ordinances 373, 426, 50518-2023. Housing Committee, ordinances 496 and 603-2023. Finance Committee, ordinances 371, 424, 490, and 520-2023. Zoning Committee, ordinances 588, 630, 552, and 589-2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We actually have three speakers on the first reading portion of our agenda. The first speaker to come before council is Rachel Winnie. Rachel is to speak on ordnance 0482. Rachel is not in the chambers. The next speaker to come before council is Nate Wilkins. Welcome back, Mr. Wilkins.
Mister Latania George-Wilkins, 1612 Arlington Avenue, North London. I was speaking against 0496-2023. When I first bought my house in London, I looked at several properties on Genesee Avenue, beginning with 1415 of Genesee Avenue. This was a different kind of house tied in with 1592 of Myrtle Avenue. 1592 of Myrtle Avenue was an old historical property, but unfortunately it was torn down. Unfortunately, we have to have a house in the place of it. All who'd be in opposition of this is because 1415 of Genesee Avenue, I fell in love with the house and set vacant and abandonment for a long time. It was owned by the city of Columbus for quite some time, and today it still sits as a vacant land. In this type of demographic area, that we don't have wraparound porches on some of these houses as we do today, we are losing a piece of history. I would be all for this for four reasons why. I want the same house that sit there wasn't over 100 years ago, with a large type of garage and fenced-in yard. It's unfortunate that we're losing its history. History is not going to come back. That's where I come in here, to lead the legacy on, because I have a passion for this community. I have a determination for this community. 1402 of Genesee Avenue was occupied, set vacant and abandonment. It looks like Habitat is all over London. But what I don't see is people, this multi-disability involved in this. But what frustrates me so bad, this is right around the area that I live in. I had watched in the 1600 block of Myrtle Avenue had been redeveloped by Habitat Humanity. Seven houses down from me, there's going to be another house that's going to be struck by Habitat Humanity of 1495 of Arlington Avenue. I had studied this community X amount of time, years and years. And so I wanted to leave on a legacy to say this. I want to be involved now, because that particular home wasn't up for sale. It was a larger piece of property. But my fear is, we're going to put these cookie cutter homes. I don't have a problem with Habitat Humanity. I love Habitat houses in the area. But we want something that's diagrammatic with that same property. But if we don't have people like myself involved in this, to what goes in this community, we are losing a lot of history. In closing, I just want to say, because I've been to the high historical history with my wife, and we will be given a seminar about London here before, so that y'all can see what we are talking about. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. And I think we certainly agree that Habitat for Humanity should have really strong neighbor relations. So we will work to make sure you're connected with them and expect their engagement with you. The next speaker to come before council is Matina Bliss.
Welcome to council. Matina's speaking on ordinance 0630 on the zoning committee. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am speaking on an ordinance for rezoning that is currently a office building that would be rezoned into apartments. Would these apartments be low-income housing? Can anyone answer that? No? Okay. So I guess with that being said, if they are not low-income housing, which they are not low-income housing, the city of Columbus has plenty of marketplace apartment complexes and luxury apartment complexes, and they're popping up everywhere. This is just going to gentrify and start gentrifying another neighborhood, outprice people. And we are over 50,000 units short of low-income housing units in the city of Columbus. And so our community members that are living in poverty do not have places to move to, because they are constantly being priced out and the cost of living is consistently going up. In a related note, I would also like to talk about the closing of the unsheltered warming centers that we've had in the city of Columbus. We had two 24-hour emergency warming centers. Both of those closed within the past six weeks. I know that the city was not responsible for the closing of those two, but it let, we only had one overnight warming center left that was open from 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 a.m. at the Church for All People. That warming center closed last Thursday. Over 100 individuals that were unsheltered had been staying at that warming center. Where are those 100 people supposed to go? The city of Columbus and our mayor likes to say, if they want to be inside, they can be inside. That is simply not true at all. Many of our unsheltered community members are banned from our shelters. Some have permanent bans, some have short-term bans. You can get banned for anything as much as like bringing in a can of alcohol or getting in an argument with your roommate. You can get banned for six weeks. If you have COVID, you get banned for a month, even though you only need to be quarantined for 10 days. Where does that person then go when they're banned from the only shelters that we have in the city of Columbus? These were safe spaces for individuals that we needed. Council President Harden, it's my understanding that you visited the Church for All People Warming Center on the 17th of this month. And when you were there, there were approximately 70 people in the building. And then, three days later, the city pulled funding from that warming center, which they were supposed to be open until mid-March. Our mayor tweeted that they had served their purpose. Whose purpose did they serve it for? Because those people needed a place to stay. Are you guys aware that there was a body found directly behind the warming center the day after the warming center had closed? That death was probably preventable, and a lot of people are responsible for that. We need safe spaces for individuals to go. I spent the better half of my day today helping people move from a camp that was being remediated by the Department of Transportation. Most of those people had nowhere to go. A lot of them were staying at the Church for All People Warming Center. A lot of them are banned from shelter. A lot of them can't utilize our libraries because they're banned from them as well. You took our most vulnerable population, put them into crisis, and now they have nowhere to go. And I would call that, I would call that trauma, forced trauma. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you, Ms. Bliss, for your testimony. And thank you for your advocacy on behalf of folks who don't have many folks speaking up for them in these spaces. I'm going to ask the Director of Development to speak to this. What you spoke of was actually not a councilmatic action. It was administrative action. And so I've asked the Director to kind of speak to the actions that were taken.
Good evening, Council President Harden, members of council. We worked together to establish three warming centers for this past winter season. Two of them closed, and caused, their closure were caused by the operators of the actual facilities they were in for a number of different reasons. The one at Summit and 16th, the property owner used their termination clause after the stabbings that occurred and two individuals were stabbed at that site. After that, we were, so of the three, we were down to one. And in light of the stabbings at Summit and 16th, and the increasing number of police calls and fire runs at the Parsons Center, it was determined that the best course of action was to close down the remaining warming center. We understand that a need still exists in our system provides for other options for emergency shelter in the city and that the bed capacity is expanded in the winter. These beds remain available and can be accessed for those individuals in need of emergency shelter. Once an individual enters a shelter, they'll be on a pathway to access services and work on rehousing. As the city continues to grow and clear, I'm sorry, as the city continues to grow, it is clear that we must do more to serve our unsheltered neighbors and to work to create multiple access points for entry into our affordable housing ecosystem. Our continuum of care partners have created a shelter infrastructure that allows access to the majority of our homeless residents. But we must recognize that some of our most vulnerable and chronically homeless, that infrastructure may be a challenge to navigate. Over the past five months, we have piloted two initiatives: non-congregate shelter and coordinated warming center, and the coordinated warming center plan, to explore alternative approaches that create safe spaces and an opportunity to come alongside residents as they work towards a long-term housing solution. I spoke with individuals at encampments as part of the community's point-in-time count last month and understand that individuals bring their own unique challenges that precludes one-size-fits-all solutions. As a board member of CSB, I look forward to partnering with our new CEO to discover how the whole system may improve and how the city may evolve and strengthen in its role. I do want to share, though, in 2022, council-approved Human Services Elevate Grants, where 3.4 million of that was to 28 human service agencies focused on the reduction of unsheltered homelessness. The goal is to reduce the number of individuals and families experiencing unsheltered homelessness to functional zero by improving access to obtain and/or maintain safe, affordable housing and person-centered supportive services. So those organizations that we funded, who focus on outreach, include Center for Healthy Families, Coalition for the Homeless, Make-A-Day Foundation, Mount Carmel Health, and Star House. Organizations that are focused on creating a safe space include Kaleidoscope Youth Center, Sanctuary Collective, and Huckleberry House. The city's homeless advocacy liaison is engaging with our unsheltered homeless population on a weekly basis and connecting individuals with outreach and other services so we can assist them in getting rehoused.
Thank you, Director. I think that, as pertaining to council and, you know, how we view the warming centers and this work, one, we thank the folks that for, over the winter months, over those cold days, we have to remember that several days after we announced, Councilmember Faber and I announced, the warming center, we had some of our coldest temperatures in our city's history, you know, negative 40 degrees, temps, and blowing. And the intent was to make sure that there was a safe space for folks. Even the folks who, to Ms. Bliss's comments, are banned from the shelter, even those folks who choose, because to the Director's point, there are beds available throughout the winter for folks, but some folks choose not to be in corrugated care. This was an action, the warming centers of council of the city. We worked together to put them on. And it was hard. I mean, these are the hardest of folks to house and to find solutions for. And it was a pilot, and it was tough. We learned some lessons. And I think that the Director would agree, and certainly this council's viewpoint, is that this is not the end of a conversation as it pertains to our hardest-to-house individuals. So we look forward to continue partnership with all those folks, the advocates, the providers, certainly CSB and our new CEO, Ms. Isom, to make sure that there are options and that there really is a safety net for all of our residents. And I think that that's our ongoing commitment to the community and certainly to our unhoused residents in our city. So thank you for your advocacy. Thank you, Director. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
Resolution of Expression 36X-2023, Economic Development Committee, ordinances 324, 462, 486, 488, 489, 508, 522, 578, 582, 596, and 633-2023. Small and Minority Business Committee, ordinances 493, 512, 513, 515, 516, 575-2023. Technology Committee, ordinances 171, 378-2023. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinances 432 and 494-2023. Neighborhoods and Immigrant Refugee and Migrant Affairs Committee, ordinance 563-2023. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinances 3520-2022, and ordinances 99 and 342-2023. Public Utilities Committee, ordinances 159, 235, 237, 256, 264, 269, 297, 318, 374, 544, 71, 497, 503, 521, 554-2023. Building and Zoning Policy Committee, ordinance 529-2023. Housing Committee, ordinances 47 and 495-2023. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee, ordinance 466-2023. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinances 381, 389, 422, 472, 498, 506, 509, 519-2023. Public Safety Committee, ordinances 123, 463, and 492-2023. Administration Committee, ordinance 461-2023. Finance Committee, Resolution 34X-2023, and ordinances 356, 376, 428, 458, 459, 469, 478, 528, and 536-2023. Appointments from Mayor's Office numbered A0076, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 87, 88, 89, 90, 91, 92, and 93-2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the consent agenda, Gary Witt, speaking on ordinance 0519. Welcome to council.
President Harding, members of council, the mayor, if he's here. I'm Reverend Gary Witt. I live on a hilltop. I'm a retired United Church of Christ minister. I've been working with and for the homeless of Columbus since 1982, when I became the first director of the Open Shelter. I was also the director of the Community Kitchen on the east side for six years. I've also pastored churches for decades and have seen the ugly effects that poverty has on people. It is with certainty that I can state that homelessness in Columbus is worse now than it's ever been and will continue to worsen if Columbus leadership refuses to do their duty. This is happening in spite of the 8.3 million allocated to the community shelter board for this year. Ironically, the shelter board states its mission statement, "Everyone should have a place to call home." The city and the shelter board's lack of leadership on housing is inept and shameful and a disgrace. As homelessness soars, the shelter board budget is $10 million less than last year, and they still manage to have 34 people on their staff, 34 staff members, while homelessness is still rampant. Something is wrong here. Are more homes being built? More low-income housing being erected? They are not, and there are no plans in the pipeline to reduce this problem. No plans for tiny homes, no moratorium on evictions that occur by the hundreds every month, no plans for rental subsidies, nothing. Where is the vision? Where is the commitment to address these glaring needs? 184 people died in Columbus last year because of lack of adequate housing. Even the attempt to provide warming center this year, this winter, failed miserably. The mayor, city council, and community shelter board share the blame for the lack of a compassionate, clear-eyed resolve to be serious about the basic human right to shelter. For me, it is an issue of hospitality and accommodation. Much accommodations are given to wealthy in the city with tax abatements and plans for more lofts and condos downtown. Those in poverty are ignored and not welcomed and are even given no accommodation. I humbly ask that those stuck in poverty be treated with the same hospitality as the wealthy. I am asking that we live up to our values, that everyone deserves to be seen. 34 staff members, while homelessness is still rampant. Something is wrong here. Are more homes being built, more low-income housing being erected? They are not, and there are no plans in the pipeline to reduce this problem. No plans for tiny homes, no moratorium on evictions that occur by the hundreds every month, no plans for rental subsidies, nothing. Where is the vision? Where is the commitment to address these glaring needs? 184 people died in Columbus last year because of lack of adequate housing. Even the attempt to provide warming center this year, this winter, failed miserably. The mayor, city council, and Community Shelter Board share the blame for the lack of a compassionate, clear-eyed resolve to be serious about the basic human right to shelter. For me, it is an issue of hospitality and accommodation. Much accommodations are given to wealthy in the city with tax abatements and plans for more lofts and condos downtown. Those in poverty are ignored and not welcomed and are even given no accommodation. I humbly ask that those stuck in poverty be treated with the same hospitality as the wealthy. I am asking that we live up to our values, that everyone deserves to be seen, heard, honored, and enjoy hospitality. What we are doing or not doing now isn't working. The trauma of poverty and homelessness must be addressed with more than pious words, but a commitment to action. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pastor Witty. And I think that this council would agree with some of those sentiments. Some of the things that you spoke about, I would say that we are working in lockstep with the, are working really hard with the community, working with the administration. But these are not easy issues, and we do believe that it is connected to our growing housing issues. And so we ask and we appreciate your continued partnership. But the sentiment that you brought is one that is shared by this council. So I appreciate your advocacy, and thank you for that.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding the consent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve these items as noted as consent? Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Mr. Bankston?
Yes, with the exception of ordinances 0578-0506-0519-0536-2023, from which I'm abstaining.
Ms. Barrosa de Padilla? Mr. Brown? Mr. Dorans? Ms. Faver?
Yes, with the exception of ordinance 381 and 509-2023, from which I'm abstaining.
Mr. Remy? President Harding?
Yes. Consent portion of the agenda is approved with the noted exceptions. We'll now proceed with the second reading of 30-day postponed and table legislation, or emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Small and Minority Business Committee that is chaired by Councilmember Bankston. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harding. I'm going to go a little out of order with the agenda today and take my second piece of legislation first. And as I read that, I'm going to ask if Ms. Kim Knights and Ms. Iris Cooper, if they will come to the podium at this time. We have on second reading tonight in the Small and Minority Business Committee ordinance 0510-2023 to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a not-for-profit service contract with the Columbus Compact Corporation in the amount up to $88,000 for the purposes of administering the Accelerate Columbus Scale Up and Grow Program to authorize the expenditure of $88,000 from ACP008426 to allow for payment of services starting March 1, 2023, and to declare an emergency. Councilmembers, this ordinance is one of seven ordinances you will see on both the consent and second reading agendas tonight that appropriate funds to the seven programs partnered to implementation of Accelerate Columbus Scale Up and Grow Up Program. In 2019, the City of Columbus launched Accelerate Columbus Small Businesses as part of a branded set of small business training, technical assistance, mentoring, and advisement programs targeting aspiring entrepreneurs and existing small business owners. This was initially offered as a pilot program with the goal of providing structured, on-demand training, one-on-one advisement, and technical assistance to participants. Given the success of the pilot program, the city has established the Accelerate Columbus Scale Up and Grow Program to build on the success of the former iteration, taking yet another step to strengthen the small business ecosystem that my office and the administration are striving to improve. I would like to thank the team at Economic Development, and particularly our small business team, Mr. Mark Lundin and Ms. Ariana Uyowa Olavariete, and the rest of the small business team in the Department of Development for their tireless work to bring this project across the finish line. And we're really excited about the seven partners that will be working with small businesses and entrepreneurs in our community. So just really quickly, want to shout out all seven of those partners: Venti Enterprises, Columbus Empowerment Corporation, the Women's Small Business Accelerator, First SIP Studios, Columbus Chamber of Commerce, JPS Print, and Naventive for joining us in this effort. Tonight, as I said, we have in chamber with us Ms. Kim Knights with the Columbus Empowerment Corporation, formerly known as the Columbus Compact, to speak to her role that she'll be playing in this program and in our ecosystem. So Ms. Knights, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, councilperson, Bankston, President Harding, and councilmembers. And on behalf of my partner, Dr. Iris Cooper, she was unable to attend due to the weather. On behalf of our team, Columbus Compact, during business as Columbus Empowerment, Sankofa Enterprises, Ask Iris, Pletcha Law, and the Center for Entrepreneurial Development, thank you for the opportunity to engage in a strategic role within the City of Columbus's small business ecosystem and joining our esteemed colleagues as entrepreneur support organizations to implement Scale Up and Grow programming targeting small businesses. We are providing sustainability and managed growth services to industry-specific programming, one-on-one advisement, technical assistance, and mentoring. Services are targeted to growth-stage businesses of food-related and construction enterprises and emerging traditional businesses that began during the pandemic. Through a combination of industry expertise, successfully operating food-related businesses, expertise in market and financial strategic planning, some of the areas that our advisors will address related to food-related businesses are: understanding the changes in influencers within their industry, access to solutions for labor shortages, understanding the changing needs of their customers, maintaining customer service, and maintaining costs and increasing profit by ensuring that menu pricing, portion control, regulatory, and other operation processes are carefully performed. Our advisors have also worked or operated within the construction industry. This is one of the riskiest industries for numerous reasons, including safety, cost, and now supply chain and human resource shortages. Through our experience and assessments, a significant percentage of small subcontractors are able to well-perform within their trade. However, they are significantly deficient in understanding blueprint and specification review and estimating according to their trades. Our training will focus on those three elements. All construction projects carry some level of risk. Our training will provide the skills to assist in mitigating the risk through being able to successfully review documents and submit cost-accurate estimates. This will lead to higher profits, stronger relationships with clients, and the ability to grow and expand their businesses. Last but not least, throughout COVID-19, throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, we worked with several entrepreneurs that started lucrative businesses. Through assessment, we've been able to determine that they are actually generating revenue. However, they are not necessarily structured, nor do they operate in the most efficient manner to be sustainable or grow. Through our programming, one-on-one advisement, technical assistance, and mentoring, entrepreneurs will be provided with strategies and direct services to successfully scale their businesses. Thank you for your support.
And thank you, Ms. Knight, for all the work that you're doing. You know, I'm really excited about this program in particular because I've said this since chairing this committee, which is that our focus has to be on sustainability, not just simply getting businesses to start, but we want to make sure that we create an ecosystem and an environment in Columbus that businesses are not able just to open their doors, but they're able to keep their doors open and do that successfully. So thank you for the work that you'll be doing in this program, but all the work that you're doing over at the Columbus Empowerment Corporation. So thank you so much for being here tonight. The applications for the Accelerate Columbus opens tonight at 6:00 PM, and you can access that through the Columbus Small Biz Hub, which is another one of our initiatives to make sure that we're connecting small businesses. That's C-BusSmallBizB-I-Z-Hub.com. Try saying that 10 times in a row. Or you can go to the city's website as well, columbus.gov/accelerate. If there are any questions from my colleagues or comments, seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, President Harding.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. And the last piece of legislation in the Small Minority Business Committee this evening is, again, another one of our recipients in the Accelerate Columbus program. This is ordinance 0501-2023 to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a contract with First SIP Brew LLC in an amount up to $59,000 for the purposes of administering the Accelerate Columbus Scale Up and Grow Program to authorize the expenditure of $59,000 from ACP008426 to allow for the payment of services starting March 1, 2023, and to declare an emergency. And as I said, this is another one of our seven recipients for Accelerate C-Bus. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, President Harding.
Pass.
And that's all we have in the Small and Minority Business Committee this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is is the Public Service Committee chaired by Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. I have one ordinance today in public service, 0467-2023 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into contract with Cargill Incorporated to purchase an AccuBriine, next-gen briine maker, to improve the roadways of Columbus during the winter months to waive the competitive bidding provisions of city code, and to authorize the expenditure of $242,288 from the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund, and to declare an emergency. Because other current briine-making equipment will soon reach its end of life, it is in the department's best interest to replace them with this AccuBriine automated equipment now being used at newly constructed sites. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Actually, before I go to that, Director, anything you want to add? Great. Now, do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Great. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Faver, Remy, President Harding.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all for me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Education Committee chaired by Councilmember Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. This evening, I have ordered 0384-2023 to authorize and direct the Director of the Mayor's Office of Education to enter a contract with the Boys and Girls Club of Central Ohio for the purposes of engaging in an after-school pilot program for middle school students beginning in February 2023 to authorize the expenditure of $255,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. The Office of Education is working with the Columbus City Schools and the Boys and Girls Club of Central Ohio to develop an after-school program for middle school youth. This program will serve approximately 240 middle school youth at six locations throughout our city. There are additional plans to unveil as a more comprehensive after-school program for middle school students will begin for the year 2023. And this evening, I have Director Smido from the Office of Education who will speak to this issue. Director?
Chair Brown, President Harding, members of council, thank you so much for considering this ordinance this evening. We are certainly excited about this initiative. This developed during a conversation between the mayor and the superintendent. The mayor and superintendent meet every month to discuss how they can collaborate and share ideas and information. And during the conversation, the superintendent shared that there is a need for more after-school program for middle school students. And the mayor said, well, let's see what we can do about that. So immediately, I started working with members of Columbus City Schools. We brought in the Boys and Girls Club because they really excel at after-school work. And we've been working on getting this initiative started. We're so, as our chair said, we're planning a pilot program that will begin very soon, that will run through the end of this school year, and then a more comprehensive program that we will initiate in the '23-'24 school year.
I understand you have a couple guests with you as well, Director?
Absolutely, Chair.
Please, be my guest. Introduce them and have them come to the podium.
Thank you, Chair. First, the Columbus City School Superintendent, Dr. Chapman.
Good evening, Council President Harding, President Pro Tem Dorans, and members Bankston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Faver, and Remy. My name is Angela Chapman, and I am the interim superintendent and CEO for Columbus City Schools. It is my pleasure to come before you today on behalf of the Columbus City Schools Board of Education to extend our support for our middle school students by funding ordinance 384-2023, the After-School Program Initiative targeting middle school students in CCS. Working in partnership with the Mayor's Office of Education, the overall concept is to partner with key community organizations in creating engaging, evidence-based, high-quality after-school programs for our middle school students. The goal of this program is to ensure our middle school students have access to quality, evidence-based after-school opportunities that support academic success, overall health, and personal development. The programming delivered at each school will align with student needs and data. The Boys and Girls Club of Central Ohio will lead the initial effort with the staggered implementation starting next month. This ordinance allows the Boys and Girls Club of Central Ohio to serve as site administrators in six of our middle schools, which include Champion Middle School, Sherwood Middle School, Woodward Park Middle School, Arts Impact Middle School, Hiltonia Middle School, and South Middle School. This partnership represents what you call the Columbus Way, diverse sectors of the community working together to advance our community forward. We call it addressing the needs of the whole child. Lastly, I would like to share a few unique partnerships underway targeting our middle school students in extension of this program. Our MAP for Success, thanks to a grant from JP Morgan Chase, students are learning about graduation requirements and workforce development opportunities in their middle school years. Our middle school counselors are working with high school, college, career readiness counselors to help students create "Discover Your Path to Success" lessons. We also utilize grant funds to support students experiencing pathways in the healthcare and IT career fields. The CTE Pathways for Middle Schoolers, the district is on a mission to create new career exploration opportunities for students. Thanks to a $100,000 grant from Google, the district is transforming CTE Pathways for Middle Schoolers. We will utilize the grant funding to support students experiencing a path in the healthcare and IT career fields. And finally, Project Lead the Way. To increase the number of students with IT experiences, we provide intensive support and align middle school computer science classes to IT standards or Project Lead the Way, which includes engineering and biomedical. Middle school students will have meaningful experiences in coding and Project Lead the Way that build their technical skills and align with workforce development. Once again, thank you for your time and support for our Columbus City School students.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Dr. Smido, also, don't we have Dr. Jay here?
Thank you, Chair Brown, and thank you, Superintendent. We do. We have Jermaine Kennedy, lovingly called Dr. Jay by the members of the Boys and Girls Club.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Council President Harding, Council Education Member Chair Brown, and members of City Council. My name is Jermaine Kennedy, Columbus Area Director for Boys and Girls of Central, Boys and Girls Columbus of Central Ohio. Our mission is to enable young people to reach their full potential. We pursue this mission tirelessly every day, yet we do not pursue it alone. Our efforts to achieve positive outcomes in our priority areas of academic success, good character, and leadership, and healthy lifestyles necessitates coordination citywide. We pride ourselves on our collaborative approach to meet the needs of today's young people, working with fellow youth servicing organizations and schools as well as our communities, our gray city, our families, and the young people we serve. We know from successful past collaborations across the state as well as the country that three ingredients are necessary to make meaningful impact on our youth. One, having a strong coordinating entity like the Boys and Girls Club provide a common quality framework to measure and bring partners together around a common purpose. Two, relying on our data-driven approach on measured outcomes along with willingness to share that data to ensure transparency and progress. And three, the Spring Board is the commitment of the city's leadership and meaningful financial investment in the work. When these things come together, additional investment, both public and private, follows, allowing for sustainability and continued bright futures for our young people. We have demonstrated success in a recent third-party evaluation between our Jay Ashburn Club and our Columbus City Schools Highland Elementary on the west side. Highland students who attended 90 hours or more of our Highland students who attended 90 hours or more of our quality youth programming, which is equivalent to about 23 days, achieved remarkable improvements, such as 84% improvement in reading achievement scores, 96% improvement in math achievement scores, 79% did not occur a single disciplinary incident in the previous or current year, 97% of chronically absent students improved their attendance, just to name a few. My colleagues, some of whom were here today, and I are thrilled that Mayor Ginter and Columbus City Council have recognized this importance of significant financial investment in our young people in a way that is coordinated, scalable, outcome-driven, and keeps the most important thing at its center, the future of our young people. We are honored that you have identified the Boys and Girls Club of Central Ohio as a valuable partner to play such a critical role in this work. I would like to wrap up offering gratitude to all the youth service organizations who share our commitment to this work daily, and to you, City Council, for considering such a significant investment in our community's young people. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jay. I appreciate that. Can you jump? Okay, that's cool. Okay. I think it's significant for all of us to appreciate that our young people, when we have the Columbus Public Schools and the Boys and Girls Club coming together to try and change the trajectory of our young people, because right now, they're going in the wrong direction. And I appreciate and applaud the efforts of Dr. Chapman, and certainly Dr. Kennedy for being here. If there are no further questions, I move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
That's all I have this evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee chaired by President Protem. President Protem, before yours.
Thank you, Council President. First, we have ordinance 0008-2023 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter a construction contract for the Intermodal Sanitary Subtrunk Extension Phase One project with Ward and Burke Tunneling to authorize the appropriation transfer of up to $23,889,051.75 in the Sanitary Reserve Fund, to Ohio Water Development Loan Fund, to authorize expenditure of up to $23,889,051.75 in the Ohio Water Development Loan Fund, to authorize expenditure of up to $2,000 for providing wage services to Department of Public Utilities within the Sanitary General Obligation Voted Bond Fund, to amend the 2022 capital improvement budget and declare emergency. This project will extend the sanitary sewer service further into the Northern Pickaway Joint Economic Development District by constructing a new sanitary subtrunk sewer for the planned terminus of the Lockborn Intermodal Subtrunk easterly along the Air Base Road to the JED's Eastern Service Boundary near Walnut Creek. It will provide the city's sanitary sewer service to a quickly developing area and increase the water quality by eliminating potential groundwater pollution by preventing the installation of packing treatment systems. Emergency designation is requested at this time so the project timelines and the Ohio Water Development Authority funding schedules can be met. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, we have ordinance 0195-2023 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify a construction contract for the 2022 Utility Cut Restoration Project with Decker Construction Company for the Division of Water, Division of Power, and the Division of Sewers and Drainage, and to authorize expenditure of $1,200,000 in the Water Operating Fund, $550,000 in the Sanitary Sewer Operating Fund, and $80,000 in the Water, or from the Power Operating Fund. Various types of utility excavators are performed within the city's right-of-way and city-owned properties by the Department of Public Utilities. Restoration work typically involves repair of existing pavement, curbs, and sidewalks. The department routinely outsources this restoration work typically involving things like insulation of wheelchair ramps and asphalt repair. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have... Sorry. Hold on a second. Next, we have ordinance 0199-2023 to authorize the appropriation transfer of funds from the Sewerage System Reserve Fund of the Ohio Water Development Authority Loan Fund, to authorize appropriation of funds in the Ohio Water Development Authority Loan Fund, to authorize amendment to the 2022 capital improvement budget, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter a construction contract with Face Mart Landscaping for the roof redirection and blueprint North Linden I, Oakland Park, Medina Area I, and to authorize expenditure of $3,692,654.16 in the Ohio Water Development Authority Loan Fund and the Sanitary Bond Fund to pay for the project. The project is needed to mitigate water embasement events and sanitary sewer overflows in the North Linden Planning Area. Public meetings were conducted to solicit public input regarding the project, descriptions of the work associated with the project were also included in the City of Columbus Blueprint website. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 0259-2023 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter a contract with Danberg Electric Corporation for the power distribution installation and restoration of the Division of Power, and provide for payment of providing wage services to Department of Public Service Design and Construction Division, and to authorize expenditure of up to $2,502,000 in the Power Operating Fund and declare an emergency. This work consists of providing labor and equipment for removing and setting poles, installing and removing conductors, and other work as necessary at various locations with the City of Columbus's electric system on an as-needed basis. This ordinance is being submitted as an emergency to avoid any lapse in service. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 0298-2023 to authorize amendment to the 2022 capital improvement budget, to authorize the transfer of cash and appropriation within the Water Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to renew and increase a professional engineering service agreement with Hill International for the Professional Construction Management Services 2018 project, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $3,693,100 in the Water Bond Fund to pay for the renewal. This contract will support various projects in the Division of Water Capital Program to maintain and upgrade drinking water supply and treatment facilities to provide a clean and reliable water supply to central Ohio. The consultant team has identified a commitment to the mayor's green initiative and their business practices, and will be involved in applying Department of Public Utilities environmental management systems to the construction projects. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
And finally, in Public Utilities, we have ordinance 0475-2023 to authorize an amendment to the 2022 capital improvement budget, to authorize the transfer of cash and appropriation between projects within the electricity bond fund, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter a construction contract, complete general construction for the Hilltop Smart Lighting Phase One project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $2,733,423.96 from the electricity bond fund for the contract and declare an emergency. The conversion of LED lights in the greater Hilltop area can provide an additional sense of safety and security to residents. This conversion may also deter criminal activity, which would lessen the financial act upon the city based upon runs from police and fire. LED lights also reduces power consumption and will reduce our carbon footprint as a city. Emergency designation is requested so that these safety enhancements can be installed as quickly as possible. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row. Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Council President, with your permission, I'd like to move on to Workforce Development Committee. Thank you. In Workforce Development, we have ordinance 0635-2023 to authorize the City Clerk to enter a grant agreement with the Workforce Development Board of Central Ohio in support of their income support program, to authorize an appropriation of expenditure within the Job Growth Subfund and declare emergency. This ordinance authorizes the city to continue work with the Workforce Development Board of Central Ohio to operate an income support program to promote access to strong career pathways for underemployed residents. The mission of the Workforce Development Board is to partner with area businesses and organizations on workforce needs so that people are fully employed at their ability and potential, fully thrive here in central Ohio's economy. Last year, council awarded a $200,000 grant to operate a small pilot program to provide income support that offered a temporary income replacement for underemployed individuals to participate in a 10-20 week training program, which led to higher income earning potential and career advancement pathways for all participants. We know that far too many in Columbus are stuck in a low-wage job, but due to family demands and/or financial constraints, those residents cannot take time off work to access workforce training that would allow them to gain more economic stability. The idea behind this program is to help provide income support to residents in this position, which allows them to finally take advantage of a training opportunity that will help them change their economic trajectory. Columbus is one of the only cities in the country to try this type of income replacement program for residents entering into workforce development programs. While the final data is still pending on the pilot program, we continue to report on the folks' experiences going through the pilot. The Workforce Development Board expects that the average immediate increase in wages for the program participants will be 55%. That's a 55% increase in wages for folks going through the program. Of the 25 participants in the 2022 pilot, 68% identified as African-American, and about a third identified as white, Asian, Latin, or Somali-American. The majority of the program participants did not have an educational achievement beyond a high school diploma or GED. Only one individual had achieved education beyond a bachelor's degree. But with this year's grant, we'll be able to expand the pilot program to a larger cohort and operate a more effective program, given the lessons that we learned during the 2022 pilot phase. The Workforce Development Board plans to focus on training in the healthcare sector, where there's also a high demand for quality staffing here in Columbus. By working directly with potential employees to identify candidates for the program, the board will ensure a high rate of job readiness and job placement for program participants. Emergency action is necessary to ensure timely funding for the Workforce Development Board of Central Ohio to proceed with the administration, planning, and execution of the program. Finally, I want to thank the Workforce Development Board Director Lisa Pat McDaniel, who hoped to be here tonight, but unfortunately, she's ill, and her senior staff, who've put a lot of hours into this program and working very closely with my office on a very innovative approach to workforce development. So with that, I want to pause and see if my colleagues have any questions or comments. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all I have at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee chaired by Councilmember Favor. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight, in Criminal Justice and Judiciary, we have ordinance 476-2023 to authorize and direct the city attorney to settle the lawsuit caption Cameron Standifer versus City of Columbus et al., United States District Court, case number 219-CV3803, to authorize the expenditure of the sum of $440,000 and zero cents in settlement of the lawsuit and to declare an emergency. On August 1, 2018, Officer Brandon Harmon arrested Cameron Standifer for an outstanding warrant for failure to appear on a traffic violation matter. During the arrest, Mr. Standifer was taken to the ground by Officer Harmon. Mr. Standifer sustained an abrasion to his left knee as a result of the takedown. Medics responded to the scene of the arrest and transported Mr. Standifer to the hospital. Afterwards, Mr. Standifer was transported to the Franklin County Jail. Officer Harmon charged Mr. Standifer with resisting arrest, but the charge was later dismissed by the prosecuting attorney. As a result of the injury sustained during the takedown, Mr. Standifer contracted a MRSA infection, which required extensive medical treatment. In the lawsuit, Mr. Standifer alleged that (a) Officer Harmon assaulted him and used excessive and unreasonable force when he arrested him on August 1, 2018, in violation of his Fourth and Fourteenth Amendment rights; and (b) that Officer Harmon intentionally inflicted serious emotional distress upon him, and that he committed malicious prosecution and assault and battery; and (c) he suffered damages. We are joined this evening by Deputy Chief Attorney Laura Baker-Morish. Attorney Laura, do you have any additional information you'd like to add at this time?
I do, Chair Favor. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening regarding this matter. Mr. Standifer's lawsuit named the City of Columbus, the Columbus Police Employees, Officer Brandon Harmon, Sergeant Holly Canode, and Officer Travis Turner as defendants. Following the voluntary dismissal of a number of his claims, including all claims against Officer Turner, Mr. Standifer maintained three federal law claims: that Officer Harmon used excessive and unreasonable force in violation of his Fourth and Fourteenth Amendment rights; that Officer Harmon and Sergeant Canode engaged in malicious prosecution in violation of the Fourth and Fourteenth Amendments; and that the city was liable for these actions pursuant to Manell. Mr. Standifer also maintained three state law claims: that Officer Harmon continued, I'm sorry, committed assault and battery; that Officer Harmon and Sergeant Canode engaged in malicious prosecution; and that these officers' actions constituted the intentional infliction of emotional distress. The city filed a motion for summary judgment and included the defense of qualified immunity on behalf of Officers Harmon, Sergeant Canode, and the City of Columbus on the federal law claims. The court granted the city's motion for summary judgment as to the malicious prosecution claims against Harmon and Canode, as well as the Manell claim against the city, finding that viewing the evidence in the light most favorable to Standifer, he provided insufficient evidence to support his claims. The city likewise moved for summary judgment and asserted qualified immunity pursuant to the Ohio Revis Code on the remaining state law claims. The court granted the city's motion as to Sergeant Canode, finding once again insufficient evidence of a viable claim. In the end, the court's resolution of the city's motion for summary judgment left Officer Harmon as the sole defendant on the federal claim of excessive force and the three state law claims. At trial, Mr. Standifer had alleged that Officer Harmon intentionally inflicted serious emotional distress upon him, that he committed malicious prosecution and assault and battery, that he used excessive force in violation of Section 1983, and he suffered damages as a result. Mr. Standifer had made an initial demand of $2.5 million. Mr. Standifer's last demand prior to trial was $1.75 million. On November 14, 2022, the parties began a jury trial. After four days of testimony, the jury began deliberations on November 17, 2022, at approximately 2:00 p.m. At approximately 4:30 p.m., the jury ended the day with deliberations without a verdict. On November 18, 2022, the jury began deliberations at 9:00 a.m. During the deliberations, the jury indicated that they were unable to reach a unanimous decision on whether or not Officer Harmon used excessive and unreasonable force to arrest Mr. Standifer. Judge Sargis gave the jury what is called an "Allen Charge" to continue deliberations to reach a unanimous verdict, but during the jury's deliberations, the parties resumed settlement discussions with the assistance of Judge Sargis. Given the length of time of the deliberations, the jury's statement regarding their inability to reach a unanimous verdict, it appeared in all likelihood that this case would result in a hung jury. Agreeing to settlement at this stage would avoid the additional time and expense of a new trial, attorney's fees, and a potential jury award that the city would be responsible for in a new trial. For all of the reasons provided, the city attorney's office is recommending that council authorize the office to settle the lawsuit captioned Cameron Standifer versus Brandon Harmon, pending in the Southern District of Ohio, for $440,000. The Department of Public Safety has approved this request, and it is important to note that the settlement includes an express denial of wrongdoing on the part of the officer. I'm here to take any other questions that the council might have.
Thank you very much for that additional information. Before I turn it over to my colleagues to ask some questions, do we know, do we have additional information as to why the prosecutor dismissed the original charges that were filed against Mr. Standifer?
I do not have that information before me. I don't know if it was a result of a plea bargain, if it was a result of a failure to present evidence at that particular point in time. I don't have that information.
Okay. Councilmember Remy?
Did you have a question?
Oh, I thought I saw the handle. My apologies. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or concerns? Yes, Councilmember Brown.
We have one question for the jury. Is there body camera available for footage?
I believe that there was, but I do not have that specific information. I believe that there was.
Thank you. Councilmember Bangston?
Yeah, I think this is the same question I asked last time that we were here, around the general fund dollars versus Caesar funds. Again, I know that we're utilizing general fund dollars, but last time, we did not get a clear answer. Can you clarify as to why is it that we cannot use Caesar funds in this case versus taxpayers' dollars?
Well, I'd like to talk a little bit about what seizure funds are. So seizure funds, of course, come because a court of competent jurisdiction has awarded the Columbus Division of Police funds associated with an arrest related to often a drug transaction, and specifically, those are funds that have been forfeited by that defendant as part of that case. So that's what seizure funds are. In terms of why we can or cannot use them for these purposes, first of all, at the federal level, there's a specific bar. When the city agrees to accept seizure funds from the federal government, we enter into an agreement. That agreement specifically prohibits the city from using it for this particular purpose. As to state funds, the city attorney's office maintains and continues to maintain that these funds would not be appropriate for use in a settlement matter. these funds would not be appropriate for use in a settlement matter. We are prepared, if the council would like for us to provide a formal opinion that would allow us to engage in the attorney-client conversation regarding why we have those concerns. I'm also willing to answer any specific questions, but just keeping in mind that if I do that here tonight, it is not under the attorney-client privilege.
Thank you for that. And I just ask to make sure that we put that on the record in that, again, when mistakes are made like this, it costs taxpayers dollars. My vote tonight is a procedural one, in that if this fails, it could cost the taxpayers even more money. And not only that, re-traumatize this individual. And so I just wanted to be on the record, Councilmember Favor, as to why I'm voting the way I'm voting, but it is not a vote that I want to be taking today. And we have a lot of more work to do. Police Chief Bryant, and under her leadership, has made significant changes. This happened before her leadership, but we have a lot of work to do. And I just wanted to make sure that I gave the context of my vote today. So thank you for that time.
Thank you, Councilmember Bangston. Attorney Baker-Morish, to that point as well, another question that we ask every single time we're faced with one of these settlements is really the conversation around qualified immunity. Does the city have the ability to end and/or limit qualified immunity?
The city does not. Qualified immunity exists both at the state level and the federal level for two different reasons and for two different legal bases. At the state level, it is a provision of the Ohio Revised Code that allows the city to assert qualified immunity, and in this case, the city did assert qualified immunity. However, in this case, the city asserted as part of our motion for summary judgment, and there was actually a finding from the court that the plaintiff had failed to provide evidence that was sufficient to move forward on their claims. So while qualified immunity was asserted by the city as an affirmative defense, and that is part of our ethical obligation to do so in a matter where it's relevant and where it is warranted by the facts that are presented, in this particular case, it didn't really even get to that point because there was a finding of insufficient evidence on the half of the plaintiff. Qualified immunity, also, I want to make a clarifying statement regarding what qualified immunity is. Qualified immunity allows for the city to assert that affirmative defense that would allow both the city and the city's employee, under certain circumstances, to not be held liable for certain violations of law. It's not unique to the Division of Police. It's all city employees, it's all public employees that are allowed to assert qualified immunity. But that's separate and distinct from the city's obligation under the state law to indemnify and hold harmless our employees. It is the city's obligation to indemnify and the city's obligation to hold harmless that causes the city to have to pay the settlement amount. That has nothing to do with qualified immunity. If we didn't assert qualified immunity, the settlement amount would simply be more.
Thank you for the explanation. We're also joined this evening by Deputy Director George Speaks from Public Safety. You know, another question that I ask is what policies or procedures have changed, been amended, in order to ensure that this type of situation does not occur again?
Thank you, Councilmember Favor, President Harden, members of council. This case is not one that involved alleged deficiencies in policies. Rather, this case is one, the damages of which were really about MRSA. Specifically, should the jury have concluded that plaintiff contracted MRSA on the floor of the residence in which he was forcibly taken down, then a jury verdict against the city would have been significantly greater than the proposed settlement today. On the other hand, should a jury have concluded that the plaintiff contracted MRSA at another location, for example, the jail or the hospital, then plaintiff's damages would have been, quite frankly, de minimis because of the alleged takedown. I believe this settlement today is a fair resolution without a jury deciding in total favor of one party and to the total detriment of the other party. And given this unique factual situation, Public Safety would recommend that this settlement is a fair resolution for all parties.
But there was an argument that was being made by Mr. Standifer that there was excessive force used to take him to the ground, right?
That is correct. That is the plaintiff's allegation, but again, there were no allegations of policy deficiencies by the plaintiff in this case.
Okay. Are there any additional questions or comments from my colleagues at this time? All right. With that being said, we will move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosity, Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Council President, may I move on to Health and Human Services?
Please.
In Health and Human Services, we have ordinance 485-2023 to authorize the Board of Health to enter into initial contracts with the following qualified vendors: AIDS Healthcare Foundation, Collaborative Research, Equitas, Health Access LLC, Heart of Ohio Family Health Centers for the Ryan White Part A HIV Care Grant Program, for the provision of services allowable under the grant for persons with HIV or AIDS in Central Ohio, to authorize the Board to modify the budgets of those contracts for the sole purpose of reallocating funds amongst the initial vendors without the need for additional legislation, to authorize the expenditure of $1,271,793.75 from the Health Department Grants Fund to pay the cost thereof, and to declare an emergency. The purpose of this grant is to improve access to quality medical care for persons with HIV or AIDS living in Central Ohio, with the goal that each client will achieve viral suppression, improving their quality of life and reducing the risk of spreading the infection. In 2021, the RWPA program for the Central Ohio area served 1,941 people living with HIV through programs including outpatient ambulatory medical care, mental health services, medical case management, early intervention services, housing services, non-medical case management, emergency financial assistance, and medical transportation. This ordinance authorizes the Board of Health to enter into contracts with the following vendors to provide HIV-related somatic and outpatient ambulatory medical care. AIDS Healthcare Foundation at $609,000, Collaborative Research at $70,000, Equitas Health at $316,000, Health Access LLC $75,000, Heart of Ohio Family Health Centers $200,000. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosity, Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And may I move on to rules and reference?
Please.
In rules and reference, we have ordinance 680-2023 to amend Sections 2323.11, 2323.23, and 2323.321 of the Columbus City Codes to effectuate common sense gun reform and to declare an emergency. This legislation will amend the common sense gun reform legislation previously enacted to correct a minor drafting error and to allow for disposition of previously legally acquired large-capacity magazines, thereby creating a safer Columbus. Deputy City Attorney Laura Baker-Morish, would you like to add any additional information at this time?
Thank you, Chair Favor. Thank you, council, for entertaining this particular amendment. During the course of actually implementing these laws, we realized that there were a few areas that could be tightened, specifically around whether a high-capacity magazine, a large-capacity magazine with 30 or 100 rounds would or would not be counted within the prohibition or the exemption. So that is the first minor amendment in order to clarify that. The second one is that we received a number of questions and comments about how to lawfully surrender existing high-capacity magazines, and so the Second Amendment to this ordinance will allow for a process by which that could occur.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Assistant City Attorney at this time? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosity, Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all I have on my committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee coming before council is Public Safety Committee, chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. Tonight I have ordinance 117-2023 to authorize and direct the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreements with LifeAssist Inc., Boundtree Medical LLC, Henry Schein Inc., Zoll Medical Corporation, and Teleflex LLC for the purchase of EMS Pharmaceuticals and Miscellaneous Medical Supplies for the Division of Fire to appropriate the expenditure of $1,205,555 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes purchase orders in the total amount of $1,205,555 for EMS Pharmaceuticals and Miscellaneous Medical Supplies from existing universal term contracts for the Division of Fire. The Fire Division needs to purchase pharmaceuticals and miscellaneous medical supplies for use in daily emergency services and emergency medical service operations. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosity, Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance 119-2023 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreement on behalf of the Division of Fire for the purchase of uniforms from Galls LLC, turnout gear from Lion First Responder PPE Inc., and SCBA equipment from Atlantic Emergency Solutions to authorize the expenditure of $1,500,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. These uniforms, turnout gear, and breathing apparatus will provide replacement equipment for current division personnel, as well as new equipment for incoming recruits. Fire uniforms consist of such items as pants, shirts, jackets, and boots. Turnout gear and SCBA equipment is used by firefighters as protective outerwear in firefighting situations. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosity, Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
And that's all I have on Public Safety. With your permission, I'll move on to administration.
Please.
Tonight in administration, I have an ordinance 321-2023 to authorize the Executive Director of the Civil Service Commission to enter into a not-for-profit service contract with Workforce Development Board of Central Ohio for the 2023-2024 Edge Program, to authorize the expenditure of $300,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. This $300,000 expenditure is allocated to support the city's partnership with Workforce Development Board for the implementation of 2023-24 Edge Program. The program will identify individuals through the Workforce Development Board and their partnering agencies to receive a myriad of programs and services, including work experience opportunities, health assessments, and life and occupational skills training, designed to assist participants with successfully transitioning back into the community and workforce. This partnership is necessary because the city does not offer many of the specialized services critical to the success of this program. This was something that was important to me in the budget to add an additional $100,000 so that we could have two classes go through this program for our restored citizens, and so I'm very excited to support this this evening. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I'll move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosity, Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The final committee to come before council, well, actually, the next committee to come before council is the Finance Committee, and tonight we have one ordinance. Ordinance 3567-2022 is to authorize the Director of Department of Finance and Management to enter into a nonprofit service contract with RIP Medical Debt, to authorize the transfer of $2 million within the Recovery Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $2 million fund the Recovery Fund. This ordinance will authorize an agreement with a nonprofit organization known as RIP Medical Debt to purchase and cancel medical debt for Columbus residents. This is truly an amazing initiative and one that this council fully supports. That said, it's also very complicated and one that we've received so much public interest in, public engagement on, that we want to refer to committee this evening, that way that we can have a public hearing on it, do more work. We're really excited about this moving forward. I'm going to turn it over to my co-sponsor on this legislation, who's been leading this effort to get this to the finish line, and also I want to thank all of our partners out there, the medical, the hospital associations, hospital systems, who have been at the table with us as we move this along. But we want to make sure it's done right and get it all the way there. So we're going to postpone, but I want to turn it over to my co-sponsor of this, Council President Proton.
Thank you, Council President Harden. And again, I think we'd be remiss if I didn't, again, publicly thank former Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, who, this was one of the last things that she got on the agenda before she left this body. Council President's right, we've been working these past weeks with the hospital systems to really figure out the best pathway to implement this legislation. I think everyone agrees that this is an incredible, innovative approach to, again, reducing burdens on our residents through our use of American Rescue Plan funds. So this is something in which, again, we've had a couple of questions come up from the community as we sort of start to engage these things. There's still a firm commitment that this council will pass this legislation. The idea here tonight is to give us more time to work with not only the hospital partners, but the public, the administration, and others to make sure that we do this the right way. And I think if we do this the right way, this hopefully will not be the last time in which we have this kind of legislation coming through council that, again, help to empower our residents financially. So I just want to, again, thank my colleagues and certainly former Councilmember Elizabeth Brown, the administration and others for their work to get us here tonight, and it's certainly my hope that we will be passing this here at council soon enough, but passing it in a way in which we have a plan forward to, again, alleviate the burden on residents as quickly as possible, because that's the whole point of this legislation. So thank you, Council President, for working with me and your staff on this.
It's really, really, I mean, the burden that medical debt has on our residents is the number two, I think I heard today, reason why people file for bankruptcy. And so whatever this city can do to ease that burden in these economic times is certainly a priority of this council. So with that, I'm motion to refer this ordinance, ordinance 3567-2022, back to committee. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosity, Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Refer to committee. Now to the final committee of council, rules and reference. I have one ordinance, it's ordinance 0477-2023, to amend Sections 362-043 and 362.07 of Chapter 362 of the Columbus City Code to include provisions of AMHSB HB 29, 134th General Assembly, that authorize sports gaming, betting in Ohio, and require withholding and remitting of Columbus income tax on certain patron winnings, and to declare an emergency. If folks don't know, with all the TV ads, sports betting is now legal in Ohio. The Ohio General Assembly has set guidelines for withholding taxes from certain gambling winnings, including for sports betting. This resolution will modify the Columbus City Code to be in alignment with those standards and extend the requirement to withhold any remit city income tax to income earned from sports betting. Are there any questions or comments on this ordinance? Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosity, Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Ordinance is passed. Seeing no further business to come before council, is there a motion to adjourn? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosity, Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Favor, Remy, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We will have zoning in five minutes. Zach, would you work with the directors around who needs to stay for non-agenda speakers?
Thank you.
Thank you.